Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's go ahead and get this November 19th committee of the whole meeting underway. We have six convenient items here ahead of us. Why don't we go ahead and start with Manager Crumstock and get right into the ComEd annual update?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, just for folks watching this live, there is a little, shall we say, a little delay on the audio because of our system, but if you're watching this on a rebroadcast at a more convenient time, everything will be correct on how we're wording. So if you see my lips working differently, it's only for the audio for this live. Obviously, the first item that we have is our ComEd annual report. Obviously, ComEd needs to do an annual report to each municipality per the White Papers that were put out some time ago when everybody was having issues with ComEd. And also, it's a good education process with what ComEd has done in 2018, where they are in 2019, and then the future of 2020. With that, our government rep, Joe Turnage, is here, and he's going to go through his PowerPoint and ask any questions. I know that Mike Cannon usually has a few in his area. And with that, we turn it over to Joe Turnage.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. So let's go ahead and get started. We're going to open up with our first page here. I'm Joe Turnage, External Affairs Manager for ComEd, and this is our annual report presentation. So what we're going to go through today will be the 2018 reliability, what we did as far as reliability goes, our 2018 enhancements, ComEd communication channels, and ComEd smart ready LED program. So this document here pretty much outlines the KD and SAFI. SAFI being the System Average Interruption Duration Index, and KD being the actual amount of time that a particular circuit is out of service. So as you can see, I'm looking down below at the KD section, the last box on that section is the yellow part, as you can see, is a very, is pretty higher than the blue, of course. So that section there is due to storm, and as we go, or weather related, and as we go through the next couple of sheets, it'll give you a little bit more detail on that. This section here, looking at the maroon bar, this is the outage frequency and the cause. This, it's a little bit blurry, but that last column there shows you the weather-related outages, and that's where the larger part of the purple bar is. This here is our circuit map. This map here, we keep it in the village here, and it outlines the different feeders and their locations throughout the municipality. This section here is our system improvements in what we've identified so far. In 2018, we had two circuits to be upgraded, and also, we had two distribution automation devices that we installed. And just to give you a little bit about the distribution automation devices, the more distribution automation devices that we install, the better it is that we can respond quickly to outages, and in some cases, we don't even have to go out there anymore. These distribution automation devices will test the feeder for us, and then it'll close back in restoring customers in different areas automatically. This section here is our maintenance inspection. So on this page here, we inspected 14 feeders or circuits, and we did temperature thermography heat inspections on 13 of them. And what this does is, it helps us to identify certain circuits that may fail on us. What we try to do is get a jump start on that and try to identify hotspots in the circuit before it actually fails and causes a full-blown outage. This next section will talk about our vegetation management. So thus far this year, we have trimmed five circuits within Rolling Meadows, and that total comes out to approximately 28 total miles. So we've trimmed a total of 28 miles throughout Rolling Meadows. All right. This section here, it pretty much talks about the different services that we provide so that customers can report things to us easily. So we have our web and mobile access, where customers can use their phone to get in contact with ComEd. We also have our alerts, where we can alert customers when power is restored and things like that. We also have our social media channels, in addition to our interactive voice response, which a lot of customers use that instead of waiting on the phone for a customer service rep. A lot of their questions can be answered through this IVR system. So this kind of breaks down what I just talked about. And if you look at our, I'm looking at the bottom line there, the 2018 section, our overall numbers. So from, excuse me, so our ComEd overall transactions, looking at our mobile transactions, our outage alerts, looking at our mentions of ComEd on Facebook, that number's down a little bit, but what I'm thinking is that customers are now getting used to using our social media networks and our e-channels. We have our Twitter followers, and we also have our Facebook fans. Our Facebook fans have went up over the years. If you look back where we were in 2014 versus where we are now, so that's a significant jump overall. But again, that tells me customers are more comfortable with using the e-channels method to get in contact with us. This here is our call center information data. We have our speed, speed to answer customers. Here, we also have our customer service and our voice response unit. If you look, 60.2%, again, that tells me that customers are spending a lot more time using our voice response unit to answer their questions instead of waiting on the phone for a customer service rep. In addition to that, our voice response unit also allows customers to report outages. So in some cases, they're probably using that to report outages as well. If you take a look at our average call handle time, there's an increase in that, and there's a reason for it. The main reason is, we spend a little bit more time making sure that we take care of customers. It's not a get the customer on, get them off. We're spending more time making sure that we provide a premier customer experience for each customer that calls us, and that's our overall goal, to be able to, you know, make customers happy about our call. Of course, they may be calling about outages and different things, but we always want to make sure that that's a pleasant experience. This here is our streetlight program. Right now, according to our records, I have eight remaining lights that we need to change out in Rolling Meadows. We identified 21 other ones, but those are decorative lights, so right now, the decorative lights are not a part of the streetlight program. Maybe something coming in the future, but for right now, they're not. All right. That is my presentation. I'll turn it over to anyone if they have questions.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone on the council that has a questionnaire comment? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you. I have a concern from a resident that lives on Bobo Link Lane that he works from home and has described that whenever he has outages, he doesn't necessarily know how to track when ComEd will be back in service. What would you suggest for this resident?
When you say he doesn't know how to track, you mean when we restore him?
Yes, if it's out, and then when it's back, and why it's out.
Okay. He can always call our customer service number, and they can give him an estimated restore time. Yeah, that'll probably be the best bet. Also, if he goes into our e-channels, he can also request information from us that way as well. So he's got a couple of options that he can use to get outage information.
I imagine he's not the only resident. This was just the most vocal resident. So should he just have the ComEd app, or what would be, thanks? So we have the power of self-service up here. Is there a mobile app that he should have that will give him more detailed information about timing to say, okay, work is in progress, and we'll see an update in four hours or something like that?
Yeah, it doesn't give him specifics as far as what we're doing, but it will give him estimated restore times.
Okay.
Yep.
Further questions, comments? Alderman Iniziano?
I have two. If you could go back a couple slides to that thermograph slide?
Oh, yes.
This one?
Yes.
So you said that you had marked the ones that you had potential hotspots, that you were going to be replaced. What's the plan for replacing the other ones that, to me, by this graph would show there's still quite a few more that need to be replaced?
Well, we do them every year. We have a certain, we look at each feeder, and we do a certain number every year. So the ones that you don't see an X next to, that's only because it's not part of the plan this year, and it could have been part of the plan from last year. And when I say replace, it's not that we replace the entire circuit. When we identify a hot area, which could in some cases be a switch of some sort that may have a crack in it, or something like that, those are potential areas for future outages. So we replace that equipment out there. If we find an area on the circuit that has a spot that's heating up, we could cut that section out and put a splice in there and put it back together and eliminate the problem.
Okay. And then you had said there's eight lights to be replaced. What's the plans for replacing those?
Our intent is to have those replaced early part of 2020.
Okay.
Thank you. Further comments? Alderman Budmats?
In the summer, you and I had the opportunity to talk, as there was an area of my ward that had an extended outage, and it seemed to be related to trees. What are we going to, I was under the impression that we weren't going to have to do as much tree trimming because they were going to have this device that they were going to install on the lines, which was going to prevent those with the tree trimming from being as necessary. What's the success of that been, and how many of those have been installed?
Well, I don't know specifically on your feeder, but to address the piece about the vegetation in our system, we're going to always have to do tree trimming, so we're not going to get away from that. As long as there are trees, we're going to have to do some trimming. The distribution automation systems, though, what that does is, it detects faults in cable. If the fault clears itself, so to give you an example, if a tree branch comes down and crosses phases, typically, that would be an outage. Switches will blow open, and we'd have to send a truck out there to restore power. With the distribution automation devices, that system will recognize that there's a fault. If that branch gets cleared via wind, or it just comes down, hit the line, and fall off, that distribution automation device will restore that circuit without us having to send anyone out.
I thought there was some kind of device that you were going to have that was going to separate the wires and keep them further apart.
Mm-hmm.
Those were going to be installed?
Yeah, we're still installing those. So those are the line spacers, cable spacers.
And how many of those have been installed in our municipality compared to how many are left to install?
That I don't know offhand, but I can find that information out.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you.
Further questions? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if you could answer a couple of questions for me. A couple of years ago, in the last year or so, we've had most of our lights replaced, the LEDs. Some of us aren't real happy with the brightness of the new lights. If we wanted to get higher wattages in some of those fixtures, how would we go about doing that?
The wattages are pretty much set. We've had some, we've had some cases where we've been able to adjust lights to not have them shine, or dim, or anything like that, but the illumination of the lights, those are pretty much set. So that's what we've...
Well, you know, there was a guy, one of your line moves in front of my house just a couple of weeks ago, installing some kind of a device, and he told me that there was different, I don't know if you call them wattages when they're LEDs, or whatever. He said there were stronger lights that were available in some cities that used them.
Okay.
Is that not a true statement?
Not to my knowledge, but let me double-check. If someone said that, they may know something that I don't, so let me check on that.
Well, where I'm really concerned about is, like on Quentin, we only have, we only have lights at the corners, and the new lights are really no brighter than the old ones, which is kind of unfortunate because we don't have them every 40 or 50 yards, like they do on some streets. So there's some areas where I think it would be helpful. The other thing I was going to ask you about, you're well aware that we're building a new fire station on Hicks?
Yes.
Is there any way you can help us get a couple of streetlights there on each side of the fire station?
Let me check on that for you.
At least you can help us, because I think that when the fire trucks are pulling out, I think more illumination there would be helpful. And I know there's some issues with the state there, but I figure if you guys helped us, it would probably put it over the top. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from council? No?
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate you coming out for the annual report. Moving swiftly along, that brings us to recreational cannabis. And if Joellen is ready to present, we're ready to listen.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. The information I provided in your packet for tonight's meeting is a preview of the recreational cannabis text amendment ordinance that has worked its way through the public hearing process and which has been drafted for formal consideration, which you'll see beginning at next week's meeting on first reading. Just to give a little bit of background, as many people recall, back in 2013, and Rolling Meadows, like many suburbs, amended its code to accommodate medical marijuana. Even though only 60 licenses were granted for that, I think every suburb in the state went through that text amendment process. Rolling Meadows ordinance followed the recommended format for that text amendment, and we amended our code to allow dispensaries and cultivation businesses as special uses in our M1 zoning district. Special uses, as you all know, ensure public hearings, and Rolling Meadows, as a result of that text amendment, did secure a facility in our community called Nature's Care. It's located on Rowling Road north of Euclid. This past June, the governor approved a bill which authorized the legalization of the consumption and sale of marijuana for non-medical purposes to become effective on January 1st, 2020. So again, like last time, all of the communities are put to the task of trying to amend the codes to accommodate these new uses. This time, the state made provisions making early entry into the program, into the market easier for the existing medical facilities to operate under the new law come January 1. So I think a lot of people who have existing dispensaries are really trying to modify and make sure those businesses can open if they're supportive of them, and they've been good business partners for the communities. Newer facilities are going to be able to come online a little bit later in the year. They're stating June of 2020. Some of the new things that the state did under the new regulations is allow something other than just cultivation centers and dispensaries. So in addition to those two businesses, they have defined and authorized a couple of, a few other businesses, which I'll go through really quickly. Craft growers are going to be a smaller version of the cultivation centers. The original requirements basically had large cultivation centers, which many of the suburban areas don't really have enough property that is large enough or met the setback standards that were set by the state to accommodate them. So these craft growers are intended to be smaller enclosed facilities that could potentially be combined with other uses. They've also defined both infusing organizations and processing organizations. These two businesses are intended to take cannabis products and transform them into other edibles or other products that would be available for sale. And they've also authorized and defined transporting organizations, so those businesses that will then be responsible for transporting the products either from the cultivation or craft growing centers to the dispensaries or other areas where they're available for sale. When staff was made aware of this and got some preliminary feedback from the council, our general marching orders were to, let's just start off and make sure that we can accommodate our existing business, if that's something that we want to move forward with. So we've taken time to define everything as allowed by the state, so all of those businesses that I mentioned, we went ahead and included definitions in the code. But if you look in the section of the code that says what is being authorized as a special use in the M1, we are just listing cultivation centers and dispensaries, the same way that we listed for the medical facilities. We're also listing them as special uses in the M1 district for the recreational facilities as well. One of the things I want to talk about, and it was based on a question that Alderman O'Brien had forwarded me earlier this week, was to provide some clarification for some of the distance requirements that were included with the medical facilities. So the medical facilities for the cultivation centers included a 2,500-foot separation between that facility and what I'll just call for now sensitive uses, daycare, schools, things that you'd want to have some separation between. For dispensaries, that distance was reduced to 1,000 feet. Again, following on our kind of marching orders, we kept that same distance requirement in moving forward for the recreational facilities, but I do want to point out, the state did not include those distance requirements in their new regulations moving forward. So if that is something that the council either now or later wants to modify or remove, that is something that could be done. Some of the other modifications that we made moving forward for recreational facilities, the state did make some provisions that would allow for consumption on the premises. We have indicated at this time, we think that's not something we should promote. I think if you have those types of facilities, they would more, or be more similar to a restaurant and have the same impacts as a restaurant or a bar. More people coming, more people staying, you don't have the same kind of turnover in trips that you would if you're just picking up the product and going home. So we've left that out for the time being. Again, something that could come back later if we had a user and a location that made sense, we could take a look at that. We also added a parking requirement that wasn't included in the last go-round, and we fashioned that requirement based on a similar requirement we have for retail uses, which is one space for every 250 square feet of sales area within the business. And then also looking at that manufacturing component, which, if you look at our other similar uses, bases their parking requirements on the number of employees that are in existence during the maximum shift. So not total number of employees for the business, but, you know, if you have 50 total employees, but there's 30 there at any given time on a shift, it would be based on that 30. We also decided to, at this point, limit the total number of facilities that could be available in Rolling Meadows to one, or the existing one that we have, with the understanding that, similar to the way some people do liquor licensing, if you want to modify that to accommodate a specific user, you could come back at that time and increase the number accordingly. As I stated earlier, we do have one existing medical facility. They have also been processing a concurrent application for the special use. We didn't include that as part of your discussion tonight. We wanted to focus on the text amendment and make sure you guys were comfortable with that and get any questions out. I will note, the applicant for that text amendment, his name is Charles, is in the audience this evening, so if you do have any general questions about medical or recreational facilities, or just about their operations, I'm sure he'd be happy to share some information with you. Planning and zoning commission did hear this case at their November 5th meeting and held the public hearing. Most of the commission members spoke favorably about the amendment, primarily because of the positive relationship we've had with Nature's Care specifically. There was only one person in the audience who I think came armed with a lot of information in support of, in support of the petition, but once she heard the positive conversation from the planning and zoning commission, she said, "I just agree with everything they said." So she was supportive of the amendment. I mentioned that we did draft the ordinance for your review. Our intent is to bring that forward to you at the next meeting, but hopefully, we can answer any questions or concerns you have about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So now would be the time to offer up any questions or suggest any modifications, should the council have come up with any modifications? Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The handful of residents that did reach out to me, there was a majority in favor. The couple of things, though, I know that parking was included in there. Do we know through there, because I don't think they would currently meet it. Is there an agreement between Nature's Care and a local facility nearby for overflow parking? Because if they're estimated to hire 20 full-time employees, I know not all at one shift, but if they're looking to just ramp up staff to 20 additional full-time staff, what are the parking options, since I believe now are there eight or 10 there? And that might be on the high side, if I remember from when they came through planning zoning.
So actually, since you've seen it, the back section now actually has parking.
Okay.
And they also have a handshake agreement with Harvest Bible. So when you look at cars that are now closer to Nature's Care but are parking on that side of Harvest Bible, those are actually the employees typically.
Okay.
So they have increased that. Charles, who's sitting behind me, has actually started some discussions with some of his other neighbors if some additional overflow was needed, and that did come up during the planning and zoning.
Okay.
And right now, they're just handshakes, but it's a mutual agreement that's been going on. But when the Nature's Care originally opened, that's why that gate was up there and you couldn't get to the back. Now that's where they're really helping people, and they are bringing in a second security individual that's going to try to direct people to either park here or there. That's the outside security person, not the inside security person.
Do we know, just a follow-up question to that, is there any idea of putting a crosswalk, or is that something, I don't know if it's Director Horn or somebody, like, I mean, like, if they do do that? Because I think right now, it's just full curbs. I don't know if there's curb cuts across the street. So is there conversation of crosswalk?
There was a conversation, but at this point in time, we want to take the wait-and-see approach, because it also has to be a logical crosswalk for that area, because you don't want to move it too close where the bend is and all those other. And we have talked to Nature's Care about that, but at this point in time, it's a wait-and-see at this point in time.
Alderman Sanoyka?
In Section 3, Part D, Number 7, so this is on page 11 of 22 of our packets, it's a subsection that says, "Proposed signage plan in compliance with the following regulations," and it lists two, and it says that "no outdoor window or onsite media display of merchandise and/or products, and no exterior signage that includes the words marijuana, cannabis, or any related word or symbol." Coming off of our G1 liquor license discussions, I just want to confirm that this is something that we would be able to enforce under our current signage code.
Joellen, you can add to this if you would like to, but this language basically mimics the language that's in the state statute regarding signage with respect to these establishments. So in that sense, the state has made a determination that these regulations are appropriate for this type of use. Thank you.
Further? Alderman Budmats?
So to that end, if we were going to ever look at the modifying our G1 requirements, again, could we mimic this language for signage requirements in that area as well?
Not that way. There is an express authorization in the state statute with respect to the G1 issue. In fact, there's case law otherwise that dictates that the issues involving the G1 cannot be regulated that way, or are entitled to First Amendment protection, so...
Thank you.
Further questions from the council? Alderman Sanoyka?
In Section 3, Subsection F, this is on page 12 of 22 of our packet, it's the second sub-bullet from the bottom, Number 7, and this says, "The facility shall not dispense cannabis or other products through a drive-through window." And I would like clarification from staff on why we're including this particular regulation.
I believe that regulation is also a part of the original medical cannabis regulations that limited that, so that we included that in our medical facility requirements and just mirrored it for our recreational facilities.
Does staff recall at this time what the reasoning was behind that?
Again, I think that was a state requirement that we just...
So part of medical marijuana is specifically, they wanted the individual to come inside, make sure the red card was checked, make sure the person was actually checked, and with medical marijuana, making sure why they were getting it, even though they have a red card, but it also allowed them to do some social discussion with them about medical marijuana and make sure that, you know, maybe there's a better oil instead of what they were doing with an edible, but that's why they were trying to get the individuals inside and not just a passer.
Further comments or questions from council?
Seeing none, there are a couple of names on the sign-in sheet, so before I open the floor, I will just announce that the floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on this evening's agenda. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council, keep their comments to five minutes in length, and comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity will not be accepted or tolerated in any form. And with that, the first name on the sheet is Lynn V. So when you come up, you can pronounce your first name and just the street that you live on.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Lynn, and I live on Pheasant Drive. First thing I want to say here is that there's an age-old saying that you can't fight City Hall, but that comes to mind tonight, but I will still read my statement nonetheless, because I can tell, I think I can tell where this is going. Okay. Many of those in favor of legalizing recreational marijuana in Rolling Meadows argue that we already have bars, restaurants that sell alcohol, and we have legalized... we already have bars, restaurants that sell alcohol, and we have legalized lots, so why not legalize the sale of recreational marijuana as well? They strongly believe the sale of it, along with the extra 3% sales tax revenue, will lower their own property taxes or keep them from increasing. They have been extremely active on Facebook and social media, and many strongly demean those who don't agree with them. Surely, there are many others who avoid conversation on social media because of the direct attempts of shaming those when voicing opinions against the sale of recreational marijuana in Rolling Meadows. So I'm taking this time to personally take a stand and voice my opinion and my husband's opinion and maybe many others who just are afraid to do so. Surely, as city officials, you have done your due diligence, I'm sure, and are considering all the arguments for and against the sale of recreational marijuana. Number one, using marijuana recreationally can cause both dependence and addiction. I'm not saying it's a gateway drug because that's been overused. In general, drug addicts do admit that they first started with marijuana. Number two, DUI accidents will increase. Plus, immediately determining the influence of marijuana as being the cause of an accident can be difficult and challenging for our police force at this time. Number three, enforcing the illegal in public ruling is difficult and often non-existent in those states where recreational marijuana is legal already. For example, this is true in the state of Colorado, where recreational marijuana has been legal since 2014. The air is thick at even the smallest community events, even to the point of decreasing attendance at the events. We know personally this to be true because we have friends, relatives, who either visit and/or live in the state of Colorado, and this is their experience. Number four, parenting is more than ever challenging in this day and age. Legalizing the sale of recreational marijuana in Rolling Meadows will either directly or indirectly give our kids the message that recreational marijuana is okay. It will risk ruining the reputation of Rolling Meadows being a family-oriented community, a community where generation after generation calls home. In summary, we, sorry, in summary, will the sale of recreational marijuana in Rolling Meadows have an overall positive effect on our community? Is it worth the risks and challenges that our city and its citizens will or may experience? I think not. We ask you to consider voting against the passage of it, of recreational marijuana sale in Rolling Meadows. Thank you for listening and for your service as our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker here for this subject is Stacy T. If you could state your name and the street that you live on.
Hi, I'm Stacy. I live on Robin Lane. My family has lived in Rolling Meadows since the 1950s. My grandpa was stationed, like, he was in the Army and he had to live here and decided that they really enjoyed it here. And so my dad raised me also in Rolling Meadows, and now I still live here. And I'm here to talk about recreational marijuana. And I'm in favor of allowing recreational marijuana sales and cultivation in Rolling Meadows. Some of our neighboring communities are deciding to opt out of it for now, and I think this is a great chance for Rolling Meadows to capitalize on it. We could certainly use the tax dollars, especially from customers who will come from the neighboring communities where recreational sales are not allowed. Sorry, I'm really nervous. We have a great opportunity to get in on the ground floor and be a progressive community where other communities around us are pausing themselves in time. We have a chance to be on the cutting edge, and it's about time that Rolling Meadows gets with the times. Nature's Care, the medicinal cannabis dispenser currently in our city, has been a great neighbor and business in our community. There haven't been any problems, and recreational sales would be a great benefit to their business. Allowing recreational sales would only help them thrive more, and it would be silly to restrict them when they are already running a successful and beneficial business here. Right now, you can go down the street and pick up a bottle of vodka and a pack of cigarettes from our other great Rolling Meadows businesses. Alcohol and tobacco are addictive substances, which cannabis is not, that we let adults make their own choices about consuming. Marijuana shouldn't be treated as a worse substance. Let adults make their own decisions about whether they want to use marijuana or not. Marijuana is less deadly and addictive than both alcohol and tobacco, and it just doesn't make sense to not allow marijuana to be sold in our community if we are already selling more destructive personal choices anyway. And my dad, he is a medical marijuana patient, and he has multiple sclerosis. And I can't tell you how much cannabis improves his life. And so I just want to give my support to the business and everything for giving my dad back to me. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, does the council have any further questions on this topic? Seeing none, there are no other signatures here on this for that particular topic, so we can move on to the fiscal year 2020 city budget.
Mayor, if I can ask, because you do have some other audience here, can we jump to Number 5, Dongate, and then come back to the budget? I mean, I'm sure that they're, love to hear about budget and rental dwelling, but...
As long as Ms. Gallagher wouldn't be too offended by this, I'm sure you're circling, motioning that you're not offended. So then for the audience here, if you guys don't mind to expedite this for you, and if the council doesn't mind, we'll jump the gun to Dongate, which is the sixth item here. And Director Horn, if you're ready to come up to start the conversation, we'll go that way.
I'm not offended at all.
All right. You don't get to leave when we're finished, though, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a PowerPoint. Sorry. Thank you. This Dongate subdivision is located in the southwest quadrant of the community. It's a single-family home subdivision off of Meacham Road, just north of Algonquin Road. About six months ago, I would say June of this year, I was contacted by the, one of the members of the Homeowners Association for the subdivision, who had requested and apparently had had previous conversations with the previous director about the city of Rolling Meadows taking over either an ownership or an easement interest in some of their drainage or outlaw areas. The two areas that we're speaking about are identified in the two plans. The first one to the left, the aerial, you can see very overgrown with tree and brush material. The red line represents the approximate center line of the swale area that runs in both the west and east outlaw areas and through residential properties. Excuse me, this is a, just a quick snapshot that shows both outlots, the east and west outlaw, and shows how the tributary to Salt Creek meanders through the subdivision, taking water from storm sewers that run throughout the subdivision and collect water off the roadways, discharge into the outlet, which runs under the road towards the east and then south down where it exits the community at that bold line. It exits the community and goes about 100 feet into Salt Creek. Excuse me. This is the, again, just a quick look at Area 1, west of California Avenue. It is about .7 acres in size. It's heavily, heavily vegetated. This is the area that, at least for the city, tends to cause the most problems with flooding. The storm sewers that go under the road at this location get clogged up, and the water rises on the west side and overflows onto the roadway. The next outlaw area would be Outlaw Area 2, which is to the east of California Avenue. This is the area that has the most defined creek area. The area is really defined and very steep banks. It also identifies two areas that would be required as either temporary or permanent easements through private properties to actually perform any kind of maintenance on the creek as a whole. It would be very difficult to maintain the system, the drainage system through the community or through the subdivision, without securing some of these easements, because a good portion of the creek is outside of the outlaw, and we would require private easements for those areas. This is just a couple snapshots of the west side. The one on the left is what you see from the roadway, and the one on the right is actually, if you walk into the driveway a little bit and look back in, it's all overgrowth and really no defined swale. This is looking on the east side. As you can see, it's a more channelized swale, a lot of erosion. I would draw your attention to the picture on the left, which shows a storm sewer which has come separated from the pipe that it was connected to, and the fences, the actual ground is eroding away from the fence. Obviously, if the council wanted us to pursue this, we would work with all the residents to try and come up with some sort of plan to minimize the damage to their property if we did some sort of comprehensive improvement there. Just for, excuse me, for the council's use, we tried to throw some costs onto this project if we were to, if the city were to take some sort of ownership or maintenance interest in those areas. To get, to have the area surveyed for dedication purposes, it would cost about $10,000. That would include the private easements, which takes some conversations and surveying of those individual properties. Bringing the sites to a maintainable condition is really just basically clearcutting and trimming things that are causing flood backup problems. And there's a lot of areas there that I really didn't show well in the pictures, where there are trees growing out of the banks, and they're actually falling in, so we'd have to clearcut some of those things. And then annually, excuse me, I'm sorry, annually, there would be, you know, between $1,000 and $2,500 in maintenance, depending on what kind of method we use to rehabilitate the area. If we used a native plant material, it might be a little less costly, because we could burn it every third year or something like that, so. Again, these were just provided as a quick snapshot, so the city council had some sort of idea of what the costs associated with this project would be. And then I did have the city engineer throw together a quick cost estimate, this is very, thrown together very quickly. The area shown on the map would only be the area associated with the outlaw, so no private easements. And that, the assumed cost or the initial estimates are about $240,000. We understand that's probably not a project that we're going to shepherd through the capital improvement program without some sort of grant assistance. This is a prime project for what's called a 319 grant that's offered through the MWRD. So that's what we would do. This project would be a competing project with other stormwater projects we have in the community. So with that, it was really a situation where the homeowners association came to staff to request this. It will take quite a bit of staff time to pursue some of these things, so we did not want to move forward without some direction from city council.
Thank you, Director Horn. Are there comments or questions from council? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was out there yesterday and walked the property with a couple of the residents, and sorry if I walked...
Absolutely.
This area here, this house got flooded last year because this, because this gets clogged here all the time. So this need to be cleared out, no matter what we decide to do as the city council, that needs to be cleared out completely.
Alderman Cannon? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm going to hand you a microphone, that way the audience at home and the audience here can hear you.
I have one, I'm sorry.
You good?
Yeah, thank you.
The colds are going around.
Thank you. So this area needs to be cleared out to make sure that this doesn't keep on flooding over. Get onto this side, it's much more pronounced, I think, than maybe Mr. Horn's pointing out. This area does have some trouble. This house right here had flooding, or had erosion so badly that we actually went in there this year and put, I don't know what you would call it.
Yeah, last year...
What do you call those rocks you put down? I'm not even sure.
Yeah, we had to put what's called gabion baskets under the flare-down section and do a point repair. Again, that's one of our problems, is we can't do maintenance on these areas because we have no easement. The only kind of justification we used to repairing the pipe was that it was a pipe that was collecting water from the street, so we could then justify doing that repair. And so it's kind of a point repair that we tried to do a little bit of creek repair at the same time.
And that helped over there, but I think this house is the house, I think, that had the retaining wall built, right? That's your house, right? So I mean, they had to spend a substantial amount of money, I have no idea, but I'm sure it was multiple thousands or tens of thousands, I'm not even sure. But they have railroad ties all the way along here to stop the road, the erosion. This creek, I'm told at one time, I don't know the history, like, some of the residents here can tell you about the history of it, but at one time, it was pretty shallow. Now, when you get down creek over here, it's seven or eight feet deep from the edge. So I mean, there's a safety issue on top of everything else. And it just keeps on getting deeper and deeper. So I think as a city, we need to do something with it. What it is, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but it is pretty substantial. So I think we need to look at that pretty, you know, with a real serious look, figure out what we can do for the future. Obviously, there's a lot of money involved. I talked to a couple of the residents out there yesterday, including the gentleman, I believe, was the head of the homeowners association. I told him, I said, "If there's easement issues there, we're not in a position where we're going to be buying easements." So the people would have to donate that property to us as an easement, because I said, "We're not in a position where we're going to start fighting for the easements and everything." They seem to think that that would not be an issue. There's a couple of people here that want to speak tonight that can tell a history of it a lot better than I can, but I think it's a lot more substantial than maybe what we're seeing right here. So that's the only point. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, certainly, I would agree with Alderman Cannon. It is a significant creek erosion issue, but again, it's going to take a significant amount of staff time to pursue that, and I didn't want to do that if the council's not in favor of pursuing ownership of the outlaw and securing those easements. So that's really what I'm looking for tonight, so.
Alderman Beniziano?
And I know this is going to be just kind of a guesstimate.
Sure.
So far, how much have we spent correcting some of this flooding? And if we did nothing, what would we probably spend to do emergency plans like this?
Well, to, right now, as far as outside the realm of normal maintenance, we really don't spend any money out there, with the exception of the point repair that Alderman Cannon referred to, which I think was about $8,000. Right now, this is on our, one of our critical flood areas that we inspect during high water, high rain events. So our guys will go out to this regardless. Because of the amount of water, as Alderman Cannon indicated, because of the amount of water that is collected on that west side from areas in the west part of the subdivision, we are still going to inspect it. That's not going to change. But I, there's, there has been quite a bit of time drainage, we call them drainage complaints, that our guys have gone... that our guys have gone out there. This would not be something that would not have a positive impact in the future of us not having to go out there as much, for sure.
Potentially, it could save us money in the long run.
In the long, it probably wouldn't save us money, but we wouldn't be spending as much as we had in the past, that's for sure.
Alderman Sinoyano.
A question for Director Horn. If we were to pursue a project of this, of this size, how many years are we looking out to?
It would, it would be a matter of how we planned it, but my expectation would be that it would either be done in a one or two-year cycle. If we were able to get the grant funding, to me, I would want to pursue it in one year because, based on our stormwater fund and the amount of money we have available and I feel like our capital improvement committee and staff do a good job at planning our stormwater projects. So I feel like that could be done in one or two years, once we secured the funding. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, but again, once we secured the funding, I'm sorry, City Manager Krumstock indicated that the 319 grants come in cycles, so sometimes they're two to five years out, depending on when the cycles come. So we would certainly apply for this grant at the next cycle if the council was in favor of pursuing this. And if we did secure it, we would design it to do it all in one year. It would make financial sense because at an 80/20 split, you know, a project of this magnitude with this much return on investment for, you know, our share would be about $100,000 would be significant, would be a significant investment of good return on our money, I think.
Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at this, it looks like there's about a dozen houses, maybe, that are affected?
There actually are more than a dozen, but, but there's about 20 homes, yeah.
Okay. And so one, one person's overgrown swale is another person's idea of a beautiful, like, forest environment. And so of those 20 houses, what is the percentage of people who are on board with this compared with the people who are going to say, you know, you've ruined my backyard and my beautiful wooded environment? So where are we at with that?
Yeah, I can tell you that we haven't done a, a house by house survey of how people feel about it. The people who we would need in easements from, I talked to a homeowner this evening, you know, we would work with them and would try to minimize the impact to their property as much as possible. But this, again, this was brought to us by the homeowners association. It was our assumption that the homeowners association brought it to us because their residents wanted it, so we didn't do a full survey of all the residents affected to see if they'd be interested in it. We certainly could do that if that was the direction council wanted to go, but we hadn't done any of that legwork yet.
I think it would be an opportune time to take that as a next step and either meet with the homeowners association and work directly with them to connect with each one of the homeowners that this could potentially affect. One, identify what their general understanding is of the situation. I'm sure they know that it floods, it's a problem area, but do they know how severe it might be from an erosion standpoint or from a health and human safety standpoint? And so definitely take those next steps. And then if you could find out when the next 319 MWRD cycle is, that can help us kind of forecast financially, where we should have staff pursue or when we should ramp up. But that's just my opinion. Other opinions or advice?
That was, thanks, Mr. Mayor. That was the only other comment I had from a resident, reached out and said, what's the cost overall for the city we know of based on something that might not have been maintained the way it should have been? Is that if other residents let their backyards go, is the city going to come in and clean up their backyard? That was just the cost thing and that was Mr. Budmats' thing. If we do look there, if I'm guessing we get the $100,000 grant, that would bring all the long-term capital improvements in the estimates we have down to $400,000. If it's the 80/20, because it's saying $500,000 here, or is that not correct?
Yeah, if it was $500,000 to do it all the way down to the southern limits, the city share would be 100.
The grant would cover the 400. Okay. That was, that was the only question is, would there be a potential share with the homeowners association, which I think probably could be something we could discuss with them? Is, are we just coming in to clean up something that wasn't maintained for the last 15 years versus the homeowners association should have maintained it?
I would only say, and I agree with that, I would only say that it's been my experience, if this was a detention pond or retention area, I would feel much more strongly in the way you're thinking about it. But a creek like this is a hard thing to ask a homeowners association to try to maintain. That's what they did 25, 30 years ago, or whatever it's been. So I won't speak to why they did that, but it's no doubt why it's in the condition.
Sure. I would be in support of it with the grant and things like that. That was just a question that raises, was it based on the maintenance that should have been done? But yeah, the long-term savings is there, I see.
Alderman Sinoyano.
So two things. One would be included in the, asking those 20 houses included in that to include the additional private property easements that you said would be needed for access to be included, because if they're not going to grant us any access, I think it's kind of a moot point. And then second, to talk to the homeowners association, that I know that we, you know, we emailed their bylaws, but I know that they can add a provision in there to, you know, help cover some of the cost, whether it even be a total of $5,000 that they can pay over a year. Because if the grant's not for another two years, they would have well enough, you know, advance notice, notice to help cover some of the costs, is what my thoughts are.
Alderman Sinoyano.
I was just going to say, maybe to cut down on our own staff time, if we're able to just work with the homeowners association directly as opposed to house to house for a survey, if that's something that we could perhaps pursue, so that way you're not using too much staff time for that.
Thank you, Alderman Sinoyano. And that was really my concern, is if there's a general feeling from the council that we're in favor of pursuing something, it's certainly worthwhile to do some of these investigations and surveys and digging and things like that. So that's really what I was looking for, is a general feel for whether this is something that should even be pursued. Because as Alderman O'Brien indicated, it is an outlet that was owned by the HOA and they were supposed to be maintaining it for the last 20 years, so.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
And this might be putting the cart before the horse, too. Should this go forward, which I would be in, like, from a priority, we'd be shifting priorities in terms of where to allocate the money from. Is there, do we know, and this might be something you come back to the council on, what would drop from priority three to put this at three and what would drop to 10? Like, do we have a cost benefit? Not, cost benefit's the wrong thing, but how it would shift our priorities in allocating and spending this money for what we had already earmarked stuff for in 2020?
So the answer, the quick answer is that with any of our funding, we always relook at that. So look at our streets and when we know how much money we're going to do, that's where the priority is. So we do have our own list of priority one, two, and three. We would look at how much money and then put that in there. And typically, if we have a high value slash grant, we're going to put that a little bit higher because you'd never know when that's going to go away. So in ours, working, once we know some of the other answers about the HOA and some of the other things in 319, we're going to work that into our mix.
Yeah, to, just for the council's knowledge, to me, there's a two-pronged approach, if you will. The earliest, you know, depending on what the cycle is, the earliest we could look at a 319 grant would be 2021, okay? If we did that in 2020, if we received it in 2021, we probably couldn't do construction until 2022. So we have, there's the two costs there. There's one that's about $30,000 with surveying and things like that, which was a, kind of an interim, get the, get the thing cleared out a little and open it up so we can get some native plant material growing.
Bring in there that is a little more suitable for the, for the drainage facility. And then the second tiered approach would be to secure a grant for long-term improvement. So just so the council knows, that was the kind of idea going in. So this would be potentially in our five-year plan, but probably not till the fourth or fifth year.
Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. Has this affected the pretty mature deterioration of California Avenue in this section where it's noted? And also, because there's water involved, does it cause ice to form on California Avenue, California Avenue in that area, causing us extra work to do with salting, et cetera?
I, I-
There's a culvert that goes underneath the street, the water goes over the top.
Yeah, it does back up there, but usually that's happening in the spring, so it's not an ice issue. I will tell you that whether, I can't say the existing condition of the road per se. I know that's in our five-year plan, that section of road to be done. It's not good for a road to have water on it. So that, that is a bad thing, so, for sure. I can't tell if that is experiencing that specifically right now, but I know that's not a good thing.
Thank you. Thanks. Alderman Sinoyano.
I just wanted to double check with staff that if they required any straw votes or other direction on this item before we hear from residents.
So I think what we heard, and Rob can pipe in, so the survey of the 20 homeowners that we're talking about, also the discussion with the HOA and see if they can do it, but typically, we try doing our own contacts with the homeowners because sometimes they might not want to say something to the HOA, they might want to just say it to us. The checking the 319 schedule, also when we do have those contacts with the 20 residents talking about or potentially putting it out there with the private property easement discussion. When we talk to the HOAC, and again, I think that you've already said there might be some covered, but we also might want to have an informational meeting out here to actually bring everybody up to speed, like what we've done in other projects, too. So those are my notes that I have.
Yeah, I would agree. And if it's okay, Mayor, what I would propose is that staff do everything that the city manager just listed, and if the homeowners are all in favor of what we're proposing, we could certainly bring engineering contract to the city council for review. If they're not, if the council's not in favor at that time, they would not approve the engineering contract and the staff would be out nothing more than what we had talked about.
Right. Yeah, just to reiterate, that's exactly what, when I was speaking this to you earlier, is that if you could connect directly with the homeowners association, allow the homeowners association to congregate those residents and then you could speak to them as a group, whether it's here or at a homeowners association meeting, that's fine.
I agree 100%. Thank you.
Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, you know, one other thought I would just like to leave people with, you know, a couple of comments made it sound like that they didn't do a good job of taking care of this property. You know, we're not, this is not just an area where they could just cut the lawn and everything was done. If you go out there and look at the area, this is, would be substantial work for, even by even professionals. I mean, no one's going to jump in a creek to clean it out that I know of. Now, you know, and I think the people have done a great job, but I think some people might be underestimating what we're looking at here, because I think, you know, if people are on the edge, whether they want to do this or not, I would ask them strongly to go out there and take a look at the area, because it's a lot of square feet and it's really not something where you could just, one person could take care of it. It's done. And so I don't, I don't think they've been negligent at all. I think the amount of water going through there has robed the creek to a dangerous level. I think that's the big issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So are there any other comments before I open the floor to those who have signed in? The first name on the list is, I believe, and excuse me, Jeffrey N.? Okay. And if you could just name the street that you live on?
Hello, I am Jeffrey Nass. I live on California Avenue. Thank you, Mayor Gallo and Alderman, for this chance to address this issue tonight. I am president of the Don Gate Homeowners Association. We are a neighborhood association of 46 homes. We're founded in the early 70s and it's interesting, I think the homeowners association was kind of founded to form a community spirit among the early people living in this community. To give you, as I mentioned, we have 46 homeowners. Our budget is, isn't that large. Our annual dues are $150, so approximately $7,000 a year. I think you all had some great comments tonight and concerns and thank you for expressing them. I think the suggested approach is a good one. To give you some quick background, we are starting conversations on this in our own homeowners association. And to mention, both homeowners are for and against, against it. The homeowners with the more serious easements in Area 3 have expressed concerns and are against it, while some of the homeowners with lesser easements are for it. So it's a controversial issue and I think the approach you outlined is a, is a good one. Just to briefly mention some of the maintenance in the area, I think that was a valid comment as the homeowners association neglected the maintenance. You know, if I was in charge of the budget, that's definitely a good question to raise. We, approximately three or four years ago, we spent about $20,000, the homeowners association's reserves, removing trees hit by the Emerald Ash for. So mainly in the area one and two, that was, you know, money that private residents paid, you know, that the city didn't have to spend. I know the city was probably faced with an even bigger issue on removing trees. And, you know, I think in terms of a solution, I think residents would be interested in a compromise solution. I mean, there's, there's concerns about if we cut down all the trees, I don't think anyone would be happy with that. So any approach, you know, has to be sensitive to residents and their concerns for privacy and natural beauty. I mean, it's a shame to have to cut down trees unnecessarily and a lot of the landscaping there does provide privacy. Let me see if I missed anything. I think some of the concerns addressed, you know, probably the main one is flooding and it's great to hear Director Horn mentioning that that area's checked, the culvert there. I think that is probably, you know, a big concern, the erosion further down, you know, a lot of, this slide doesn't show it here, but it's interesting, another slide that Director Horn has, does show the storm sewers that feed into this creek and especially downstream. And there is a lot of water, you know, from public streets that, that, that flows into there and then kind of erodes, you know, people's private property. So there's kind of a trade-off between water from public lands and rolling meadows flowing through their property and causing erosion. That would conclude my remarks unless there's any questions I can ask or answer for you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes. Mr. Nass, just if it were to come down for your other HOA topics, anything?
Sure.
Should this continue forward? You talked to your residents about that. Do you decide on a majority of vote? Like, is that what you're visioning this would come to? Because you said it's a controversial topic at your meetings as well, like we had a discussion here tonight.
Correct. We would have to take it to vote. We would have to communicate this more widely to all our residents. Initially, this has just been communicated to the residents immediately affected, so we would have to proceed further. I think having the city contact residents as well would be a kind of a nice, a nice approach because there, even on our Don Gate Board, there are people for and against it. So if the city were to do that, that would be, I think, a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question. There's, there's only two residents in Area 3 that would have to give up a substantial easement, is that correct?
Yes. And those two residents, I think some of them are here tonight, definitely express concern and are against that. I mean, I can't blame them. If I, you know, saw a significant easement coming across, you know, my property, I would be really concerned and, you know, to see, is that really needed? Are there alternatives? You know, what's, what's involved? Because, you know, a person's property, you know, they spend a lot of money on it, obviously, and that is, that is a great concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. No, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list for this particular subject is Michelle, I believe. Michelle?
Hi, my name is Michelle Maglan. I'm at 311-19 California. I am on the east side of California. I do understand your questions because you have no idea what this property looks like. So I just want to explain that I personally have been there for 22 years and in that time, I've seen the erosion on my side go from approximately just a little swale to it's about here now. So when I stand in the creek, it's this deep. So for someone to fall in the creek, very difficult for them to get out. I am the one and my neighbor Patty, we are responsible for getting you to spend the money on the sewer, the storm drain repair. Took us about seven to eight years of talking about how, so when I moved in, this is the storm drain. And then- Took us about seven to eight years of talking about how, so when I moved in, this is the storm drain, and this was the creek. So, the storm drain was about four feet off of the ground, so it began to crack. Finally, I said, if that cracks during a storm, you're going to have backup somewhere. So, better to do it now, when there's not an emergency, than to pay for that emergency later. So, they did. They came out, they fixed it, they put some good gabion down, and it's really kind of stopped that erosion there. We do have two storm drains on that property. So, in nineteen seventy, when our houses were built, think about what was built in Rolling Meadows? Not as much as is built now. So, we are now the burden of all of the storm drain coming. All the, your Rolling Meadows water from the storm everywhere comes into my creek. So, that is the cause of the erosion, is that our city has built up over the years, and we still have the same place for all of that water to go. So, personally, I feel like a temporary easement, I'd be very comfortable with that. I don't think there's anybody in our subdivision who doesn't want to fix the problem. I just think we disagree on how to fix the problem. Because I don't want a permanent easement for, let's say, a, a public path to go through, because it really does look like a park. A public path to go through my property, that isn't something I want. Yes, I did spend ten thousand dollars on my, um, my retaining wall about six years ago, and we've continued to try and bolster that area. I'm not complaining. That's my property, I need to improve it. However, I do feel the water excess that is going through that creek is not something that was going through that creek in nineteen seventy. That is all a result of the building up of Rolling Meadows. So, I personally have two storm drains right in front of my house, so. So, again, I, I, I would be very, um, willing to work with the city on anything. Again, nobody wants deforestation. I don't think the city's going to do that either, so we all have to have an agreement about that. But, um, again, I would be not opposed to a temporary, um, easement at all. However, I also don't know if, if, you can't just fill that area with a gabion to, to bring up the property there. I can't speak for the other side, but I can only speak for my side, where it's so deep. I don't see why you just can't put, fill in there, and, and I think that would cause the, the bottom to, to, to rise up to a more reasonable, safe. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next for this subject is Becky, Becky B. Becky, if you could just name your street?
My name is Becky Booth, and I live on California Court. And, um, my husband and I have, we bought our home in August of eighty-five, so that, we've lived there thirty-four years. So, we've watched lots of storms through the years, and I do agree with Michelle that the creek is getting a little deeper. We're down past that area, we're in the Area Three area. And, uh, the, it's, uh, I would say it's a natural area. Our property, um, extends at a very odd angle, you can look at that map and you'd see. It extends at a very odd area back to a bunch of boxes that are the utility boxes, and then the creekside woods abuts that. So, we have been very, um, I would say I'm one of these nature people, and extremely, um, good caretakers of the woods. My husband has a chainsaw and chaps and all the professional gear, and, um, we maintain both our own side, you know, the property on our side, as well as our property on the other side, and also kind of maintain, uh, kind of brush piles at the top. There's a lot of, um, sloping on both sides. We have a walkout basement. So, California Court at street level is, you know, you go in the front door at street level, you come out the back, and you're doing a walkout basement. So, we have, it's a very steep slope, it's a very inaccessible area, and it's a very fragile area for foot traffic or for, um, recreation or anything like that. And that's been one of my issues, and that's one of my concerns, is that we have, we've seen a lot of erosion, and, um, we are, I guess, accepting that, that it is a natural area. Our landscaping is not threatened, because all we're doing is sort of taking care of what's already there. And our own home is well away from that area. I would say, I was quite surprised, I never knew about any of this until Sunday night, when I got, received this email from our homeowners, and, um, was really stunned to find the severity of the problem. This, I was never aware of any flooding, where I've never seen water on the road on California Avenue. I do remember one of the Hundred Year Floods, when there was a lot of water on Don Gate Lane, east of California. And that was pretty terrifying, and I never saw that again. But, um, I would just say, one of my main, I came here tonight not to talk really, but to ask questions, and because there's just not enough information here for me, and to try to find out, like, of this, uh, Area One and Two. You've pretty well explained Area One, and I guess I have more questions about Area Two. Would this be the erosion? What would be done about that and where? But, um, as far as we are concerned, Area Three, it doesn't seem to be connected to the rest of this problem. The, you, you use the word meander for describing the creek, and I would invite you to come out and watch a storm, and all that happens is, you would think you were at a rushing river. The creek, there is no meandering, that water just gushes through. We had a bridge that was made out of railroad ties, until the creek widened and it was no longer wide enough to use railroad ties. So, we've now constructed a new bridge, simply so we can get, you know, over and back, and it's not a heavy-use thing. But, um, the water would come up to the bottom of the railroad ties. So, even though there's this depth of creek, it is taking an incredible volume of water. And the first, um, fall we lived in our home, we were really curious to know where all this water was going. So, after the ground froze, our, we and our kids went out and we walked, followed the creek to see, you know, where is this going to end up? And it, it is pretty amazing to just see how it goes off into the woods, and it becomes, I think, a problem further down, but that is unincorporated Palatine or somebody else, it's not Rolling Meadows. But, the, um, I've never seen a problem with the water moving. And for that reason, I think you've already expressed, there were a couple of residents here who would, who don't see that they are part of this issue. I would like to save you five thousand dollars, survey money, and just say, put that into solving another part of the problem, and just eliminate at least our home from Section Three, or Area Three, whatever you called it. Because we're, I think that would, it'd do more damage to our property to have somebody come in and do a lot of, whatever it would take to do whatever you think you need to do, than to just let it continue to do what it's naturally doing, which is just simply to do what water does. When a tree goes down, that changes the course a little bit, and over all these decades, that's what we've watched. So, I think, um, I have a concern about the twenty residents?
We do limit it to five minutes.
Okay.
And we're over five minutes, so you know.
All right. Then, my husband will pick it up, because we have a concern about who's going to know about this, and also the, um, the long-term implications of the easements. Okay?
Yes, perfect. Thank you. And that would mean Ed, your Becky's husband?
Hi there, my name is Ed Booth. I live, uh, thirty-one forty-three California Court, which is the cul-de-sac. Uh, I'm certainly not going to repeat anything that Becky said. I also want to sympathize, empathize with my neighbors who've got serious problems up there. And so, I, what I'm about to say, I don't mean to diminish any of the problems they have, because I do see that they do have real problems. However, as Becky alluded to, by the time the creek gets down to our place, and I can show you pictures and I can show you videos that I've taken during storm events, that by the time it gets there, it's wide enough and it's flowing fast enough that there is no backup at all on our property. The other piece of information I'd like to make you aware of on our property, if you look at the maps, uh, I took a photograph today, but I would show it to you. Of all of the people affected, our home is the only one that has the creek going totally through our backyard. Most everybody else, it's in their backyard, or it's tangential to their backyard. Ours, it is about a third of our lot, is that creek. So, that's why I'm very sensitive to the kinds of things that would happen. And yes, we've had trees come down. Um, I have my safety certification from Steel Chainsaws. Um, I have all the safety gear, and I've taken those trees out. In fact, we took about five or six out earlier, like, two months ago. And there's a couple more that are pretty precarious, which I am perfectly happy to take out of my own. So, as Becky alluded to, if you guys want to save some money, I think you can, and, and by the way, I'm really happy to talk to anyone from the staff, from, from Rolling Meadows. Um, and just echo what Becky said, uh, our neighbors and, uh, homeowners association apparently has been aware of this since June. We found out about it Sunday night. So, I, I would like some direct communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will. And for Becky and the audience members, if you do have additional questions, feel free to email them to me, and I'll work with Director Horn on getting you feedback that you're looking for, or email Director Horn directly. And for those of you who came for this particular subject, I think we're at its conclusion, so if you don't want to stay for the rest of this evening's committee of the whole, you're more than welcome to leave. We won't be offended. If you stay, enjoy, we have a couple more items to discuss. That next one would circle us back. Now, Melissa, if you are interested in coming back up for the twenty-twenty fiscal year budget?
As Melissa actually walks back, I would just make the comment that, um, obviously, this is the third month-plus that we've talked about our budgets. Really just one more look. Um, obviously getting some feedback, and what we really look at this last meeting for is if you're really place-setting for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget. And again, um, now that Melissa's behind me, that was my stalling.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In your agenda packet, uh, there is a link to the city's budget, the twenty-twenty budget. Uh, it has been available, uh, since September on our city's website and under the transparency portal. Uh, the city's budget, and this is our last, uh, meeting on the budget, began, uh, as far as planning in January of this year. And it's a thoughtful, deliberate process, and it's a very careful process. The city begins twenty-twenty with a strong fund balance and balance sheet, and shows a lot of investments in capital infrastructure. Uh, the twenty-twenty budget is the city's planning document for the next year, and will show and allocate the revenues and expenses for the next fiscal year. And although it is a planning document for just one year, it is always looking ahead, several years ahead. And that's what we start doing now, as we start planning for the next year. So, while our twenty-twenty budget is wrapping up, we're also looking ahead to twenty-twenty-one. I did want to just summarize, although it is in the city council packet, what's been done so far. Uh, we have the summary outlined, and of course, we did release the budget in the September tenth city council agenda packet. I always like to note that we did hel- hold the truth and taxation public hearings for the city and the library, and we also had the budget, the public budget hearing for the city and the library as well. Those notices are always published in a local newspaper. We, at this point, uh, have approved the city's tax levy. We've had discussions on the city's budget. We've held our one-on-one meetings with each of the city council members and the mayor, and listened and learned and are thinking ahead as well. Additional notes for the twenty-twenty budget, as previously mentioned and documented in the city's twenty-twenty budget, uh, as we have awar- been awarded the GFOA's National Recognized Budget Award, uh, we will also apply for that once the adopted budget is adopted. Uh, the general fund balance is strong and in parameters. Uh, year-end revenues show about a one-point-six percent increase, and expenditures show a one-point-four percent increase. So, typically, uh, this is a good way to measure and see what you've done year-over-year. Our city's tax levy was approved on November twelfth, and is a two-point-four percent year-over-year tax levy change, or three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, the proposed budget does not show any increases for utilities rates this year, and of course, that was work done with the utility rate study. Uh, we will be reviewing those policies and fund balance, looking at that in the future. We have three fund balance policies, and they are all in parameters. Uh, as a footnote to that, uh, in December, we will bring back to the city council for review and discussion a garage fund balance policy, one of our internal fund balances. Uh, the chipper service discussion that we had at a committee of the whole meeting for the refuse fund is not included in the budget, but we are going to do a twenty-twenty project, uh, starting with a survey. And a couple of footnotes in terms of staffing, there is only one part-time position elevated to a full-time, uh, position in the utilities fund. Although there are numerous, uh, staff increase, uh, requests that are in the queue, none are, have been added to the budget without further discussion with the city council. And even though open positions may remain open, none of those could go forward without city council approval and budget amendments. So, I wanted to close with just a few upcoming reminders for next week, because November twenty-sixth city council meeting, we do have two resolutions, one to approve the city's budget, and then one to accept the library's budget. Uh, as we note, in the future, we, um, will present the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, our city's audit for twenty-nineteen. We do, uh, present that in June, at the June Committee of the Whole. We were, just like a budget, we work on our budget and our audit throughout the entire year. So, with that, we always note that typically in the month of June, we'll present a fund balance allocation discussion. A couple items that I put in the council write-up for you is to think ahead a little bit in case you have some thoughts and considerations for twenty-twenty-one in terms of future budget or capital planning. Uh, we always bring back parameters in future discussions at committee of the whole meetings, but of course, tonight, if you've got some thoughts for the future, we would be happy to entertain those, uh, comments or thoughts. And then just going back again to twenty-twenty budget, if you have any thoughts or, or ideas or, or additional comments for right now. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, with that, are, are there any items or changes that council wants to address or bring up for the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget at this time? And if not, then are there any items or areas that we should start exploring now for the twenty-twenty-one budget? Alderman Sinica?
Unfortunately, I don't have any systemic suggestions at this point. I just, um, had a couple of calls from residents that wanted, um, me to pass along, um, questions for how they can receive, um, a priority for resurfacing on Crestwood Drive for the twenty-twenty-one budget, um, and who they should contact in order to, um, determine how that can be, uh, put on the agenda going forward. And I had another resident that wanted to request additional transparency for how the city is, um, funding its budget other than the tax levy, which, um, I did point that resident to our transparency tab on the website, but perhaps this is, um, something else that we could consider in any outreach efforts going forward.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Doesn't seem like there's anything further. Thank you again, and we'll vote on it next week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That moves us now along to the final point, which is our rental dwellings, the license program, survey response?
Obviously, because I pulled, uh, Rob out for the other meeting, uh, happening over here, you have Superintendent Don Wenzel and Assistant Director?
Joe Allen.
Joe Allen, sitting in the back. She's coming, too, on our next item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, tonight, we, uh, wanted to, um, review, uh, the results of a survey that, um, we had gotten direction from city council to perform regarding our rental dwelling, um, licensing program. Um, the, uh, um, in March, uh, as we brought the ordinance before city council to, uh, uh, remove the SANSA clause in an ordinance, or in a, on the program, which has been, uh, renewed several times over the last twenty years. Um, there was some discussion with, uh, then Director Fred Vogt on, um, performing, uh, performing a survey. Uh, we did actually two surveys. One was with the property owner, uh, whether it be a, a house or townhouse or whatever the case. Um, we sent out, um, surveys with every, uh, renewal notice, and, um, the results of which we came back and, and were tabulated. And, um, I have, uh, included, uh, in, uh, the council packet this evening, the questions that were asked, uh, and then, uh, what the response percentage was. Uh, generally, um, you know, the, the, uh, a vast majority, seventy-eight percent, have had a good experience with the program. Eighty-four percent think that the application process is easy. Seventy-five percent, uh, that the program doing in May, uh, and the May is, is appropriate. 75% that the program doing in May, and the May is appropriate. 65% that the inspections that take place are helpful. 73% thought that the crime-free housing program was beneficial to them. So, and 80% have generally had a good experience with community development, and 81% with the inspectors. So with favorable results of the survey, such as we received, and this is the results of, or the, you know, all the surveys that we've received back in, we believe as staff that the program works, that people are generally happy with the program. You know, yes, we did get a couple of responses that, you know, they thought $50 for the rental license was too much, and that generally came from people that owned more than, more than one place. So what, and the, so we sent out 998, and of the 998, 47 of the owners, registered owners are multi-unit owners. So like I said, we did get, you know, response, a couple of responses that, you know, the $50 was too much, and we attributed it more to them than to a single property owner. So what, next week, we plan to bring the city council, bring back the ordinance to continue the program. And with the results that we've seen on the survey, and because it's been sunset clauseed, like I said several times over the last 20 years, we again are going to ask city council to remove the sunset clause, and if changes are necessary to the program in the future, certainly, city council has the opportunity to take action, to make changes. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you. Alderman Sanica.
So, my concern is that it seems that the sunset clause worked like it was supposed to and forced the city to reevaluate the program in this comprehensive way. Would we have any sort of future review of this program going forward if we were to remove the sunset clause?
We would continue to, you know, with any program, if we see that we start to have problems with it, we would, you know, can make changes to it. This program essentially has not changed in 20 years. I've got the original ordinance here, and to what we have now, the fees haven't even changed. 20 years ago, when we started, it was $50 per unit. So essentially, we haven't changed. We've just continued it. The only thing that changed is that we require the crime-free housing, them to go through the training on crime-free housing now if they're going to be running a unit.
And that's also why Sergeant Sayes is sitting in the back, if you have any questions, because when that really started, he really brought that through and some of the other things. And obviously, now that he's a sergeant, he's sort of moving it to someone else. But that was a big evaluation when he took over, and he actually suggested some other items. And then obviously, with some transitions in community development, even when the inspectors go in there and actually do their inspections, how they're doing their inspection. So over 20 years, it has grown, developed, and matured. But again, it does go through an evaluation when we go through, obviously, our annual review of even some of those other items.
So my concern is if we don't have this sunset provision for the ordinance itself, then what guarantee do we have that this feedback would come back to council?
Well, certainly, the tenants or the property owners could, just like this evening, can speak out to city council at one of the meetings if they have not gotten resolution by contacting staff. And, you know, we can, city council members can reach out to us, we can do the investigation. And again, if changes, you know, if we find two years, five years, whatever the case, that some change needs to be made for, you know, whatever the reason. Right now, again, it's been 20 years, and, you know, other than adding the crime-free housing, nothing, you know, nothing has changed. But that opportunity, as with any ordinance, any program that is, you know, put in place by ordinance, can be changed by city council.
And I think that what Don's also saying, in 20 years, it's been very limited when anybody's really brought up anything about this. It's mostly been staff that has generated the maturity of what's going on right now. And putting words in anybody's mind or in their other thing is, we do that constantly with all of our stuff, that we're always evaluating, see what's better. But again, the sunset for 20 years, it just comes up, but we've been doing the growth and the development. And if someone was to contact you, we would take that, and we would have those discussions. And I think that if you had enough discussions that people want to have, that's also part of the budget, that someone can say, "Well, I heard this," and that would be generating. So again, it's grown on its own, it's developed on its own. Obviously, if you want to hear even from the crime-free housing, how that's actually helped the city of Broling Meadows, as I said, Sergeant Sayes is sitting in the back. He loves talking about this, and if you want. He has Saturday events, if you want to come.
He's normally on midnight, so he's.
My, my last follow-up on this, and then I'll yield my time back, is just that I, my concern is that while we can bring anything back to council, if we don't have this type of high stakes where the program will no longer exist if we don't act on it, I am concerned that it won't necessarily become a priority, especially if it's not already at the point of an emergency or at the point that we have owners and residents complaining to us for an issue that's already existing. So I'm concerned that this might take away some of the proactivity that we have gained by revisiting this every so often.
Well, and if I may, just add on the sunset provision, so this past year, and it, you know, it had the sunset on it, and, you know, we missed it, and didn't extend it prior to the expiration of the sunset. So that kind of, you know, got things murked up. And if we don't keep track of, you know, programs, ordinances, et cetera, that have sunset provisions, you know, that's probably going to happen again in the future, that, you know, where we kind of lose track and think that we have something in force, and to find out that it expired two weeks ago, or two months ago, or, or whatever. And similar to, you know, what was recently done with the electrical tax, instead of counseling that they're reviewing and so on, and, you know, if you've got something that works, something that's been in effect for 20 years, why would you want to review it every couple of years when you've got so many other things on your plate? That would just be my other thought.
So forgive me for this, and I'm going to ask a couple of questions, because they're only coming to mind now as you're speaking. Because we put a sunset clause on this rental dwelling program, it was a mechanism to make observations at a given point in time. What, what was the primary original intent of the sunset clause? Is it in order to reestablish the value to the landlord, or to protect the tenant, or a measure of both?
It was actually, we had passed individuals who on the city council read it and thought it was a great thing, and there were municipalities and other organizations that were putting sunsets on all different kinds of things. And like many ideas, they really didn't take off, but we, as the city of Broling Meadows, kept on just doing additional sunsets and just keeping them along. So it was not one of those kind of things that, hey, we want to take a global look at this kind of thing. It just was an idea, let's just put this in there, and that's where those discussions came. But what you're trying to say is not a sunset. A global look is obviously a discussion that if the council wants, that's also what the budget is for, if someone says, "Hey, what's this about?" But again, it was a practice that was a long time ago that, you know, some people thought it was great. It started out in the East Coast, and it really, very, very, very few of them ever existed in the area.
But now, it's becoming more the norm in the area. If you, you know, check other communities, most communities have a similar type program for rental housing. And it's important to us as community development because of property maintenance, and that's one of our biggest complaints, is property maintenance. And if we know that the owner resides there, it's easier to deal with it. If we have a tenant there, and then we have to track down the owner, this gives us a mechanism because they have to register with us every year. We know who the owner of the property is and how we can get ahold of them. So that, that is one of the nice things about this, is, you know, the property, the house next door to you could be a rental, and that owner could be in Arizona, could be in California, whatever the case, and they don't see the condition of the property, at least by us doing inspections on the property. They're, the owners in those cases aren't trusting the city to be able to have the watchful eye and make sure that there isn't illegal activities and things like that, that the walls aren't being knocked down and so on. So it, it's, you know, it works two ways, and it ensures that the people that are running these homes, that they do have safe habitat.
Further comments or questions? Alderman Budmans.
Yep. Thank you. Mayor, there were only two of us tonight who voted on this back in February, who are presently going to be voting on this again when it comes up next month. It's, for some background for those who weren't here then, it came to us as kind of an emergency measure because the sunset had already expired, and, and there was some, there were one or two people who were landlords who were disgruntled or not happy with the process and wanted to be, have a say or voice in the process. And so at the time, we asked that, we asked that there be a committee formed, which included people from all areas, from the city, rental community, renters, landlords. And we passed an amendment for that, for that, for that to happen. And I remained very quiet about this this year, because I wanted to see how this was going to take place. So to read in this week's cow write-up, that the staff decided that they, they didn't like our idea, and they didn't feel it was necessary to do what we voted on, and to, and to have an ad hoc committee of that, of that nature, is really, really disappointing. If we voted on it, and whether we're right or wrong, it really would have been nice to hear about it prior to tonight, saying, yep, everything's working great in our program, and we're really happy with it. And we're just, and just having what we voted on as a council then, basically ignored, is disappointing. Second thing, looking at this, the fact that 50, 50 out of 1,000 probably units, surveys were mailed out to random tenants, it's not surprising me, to me, that three, and actually, it's actually more like five, sent back responses. And to only have five responses out of 1,000 rental units is really disappointing that we have.
Those were tenant surveys.
Tenants, right, yeah, I get it. But I'm assuming that, you know, all of the tenants, their opinions are valuable to us, just like the landlord's opinions are, even though we're not collecting money from them, we are indirectly, because they're paying for it. And so I'm really disappointed that we only have five responses from, from renters, and that was kind of the sum of the mindset behind asking to have a committee that also included them. And so to only have five out of 1,000 or more tenants in the, in the city having any input into this is very disappointing. So when it comes before us again, I will not be, I will not be in favor of removing the sunset provision, and I'll be expecting us to do a better job of involving, of involving more broad-based people from all over this issue to have a voice in it. And I'm not sure if the people who originally came to us with problems or thoughts, wherever, wherever talked with or consulted in this process, I can get back to those people and find out, but it, it doesn't, I intentionally stayed quiet just to see what would happen and where this would go, and I have to tell you that I'm really disappointed that we passed an amendment and it was basically ignored.
Thank you, Alderman Budmans. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a thought, sitting here, seeing this for the first time, is, I don't know that we can do anything to increase response rate. I thought 20% from the owner perspective was very good. Is just an idea, if the sunset were to be removed, can we just issue a survey on May 31st or whenever they renew their license? Could we just put, I mean, I don't know that it would help increase or decrease response rate, but we could do it annually, and even if we get 20% back that way, we're getting feedback every year, and then maybe do an official one every three years. But I was just a thought, is maybe we issue a survey, like anytime they submit their license application again, we could give them a survey.
We could do that, and also, obviously, when the crime-free training is done on Saturdays, I forgot when it is exactly, on which Saturday, but Carlos does ask those kind of questions. Maybe we can also have them do a survey then, too. And, you know, the same thing is, you can, there's really a few choices. You can remove a sunset, you can add a new sunset, or you could actually just say, here are the things that we want to be done, and then put a timetable on that, too. So what we're saying is that there's ample opportunities for additional surveys as people come in. And then even with the renters, if we find out that they're a renter, maybe we can hit them up a little bit differently with a survey when they change the water bill to their name, too. But there are other avenues that we could do down the line, so annually plus additional confirmation.
Thank you.
Alderman Beniziano.
So again, being new to this, this was the first time knowing about this, that this program even existed. And I'm going to kind of go back on my own profession here. We have a sunset clause for Nursing Practice Act. It, it has a sunset, and it's because we, we review it, because things change. I understand, you know, it's been here, the program's been in existence for 20 years, while nurses have been around for 100 years. That doesn't mean that things don't need to change and things don't need to be reviewed, things don't need to be improved upon, crime stoppers or crime-free housing, you know, that has been improved upon. So I understand that it may take more staff time, but I would definitely like to see the sunset in there, because I think there's such a disconnect and a potential issue between renters and landlords that we could be doing a disservice to our residents. And maybe there is more that we need to be doing. And if that includes adding things to this program, we wouldn't know it on this council if we never put a sunset clause on. Some of us that served for only two years or four years may never see it. So I would definitely be in favor of still having a sunset clause and continuing with having this committee that should have been put together.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Further comments? Joellen.
Since this is a committee of the whole, and we're, we're really seeking feedback, it's, it's helpful to hear some of the comments. And just a couple of things, I, if we're going to have a sunset clause, or you want some type of an evaluation, it would be very helpful for us to know exactly what the concerns are. You know, we, we did a survey, and I, you know, again, I just showed up here a few months ago, and this survey is a, is a, is a pretty decent return for a survey, getting a 30% response rate from the owners, all expressing, or not even just a majority, but an overwhelming majority of them expressing satisfaction with the program. I'm not sure what we're trying to find out, and maybe it's not the property owners, to your point, you know, that we're looking for, more of the relationship between the owners, the property owners and the, and the residents. This is a program, let's just, you know, look at what this program does. This is a program that's intended to provide us with information on who owns the properties so that property maintenance can be properly addressed. It's a successful program here, it's a successful program in other areas. The crime-free component of it in Broling Meadows is something that other communities call us and emulate our program because it's been so successful for us here. That, that type of thing happens in other areas. So I'm all for continuing evaluations.
As Manager Crumstock said, you can either do that with or without a sunset clause. So I don't know whether the issue is having a sunset clause or not, or whether we need to actually do some additional research. And I'm not hearing what that question is, I guess.
To, just to fill you in a little bit further, what had happened was, we received as a council, an email, which was an email, which was one of the emails indicating that the sunset clause had expired. And this, this individual is a property owner and she rents out one of the properties and lives in the other and was going through some challenges dealing with the Community Development Department. And in such, she wanted to reach out to the council for assistance to reevaluate the program. And that's when the council had requested that we ask for staff to put out a survey and get the perspective of renters, landlords, multi-unit landlords, single onesie-twosie landlords that have one or two houses here in the community so we can understand what the needs are, what the issues are from each one of those perspectives, and then hopefully enhance the program. And I had been following up with her regarding this and she hadn't even received any feedback or been asked to put part of that working group. And I understand now because we didn't, we decided that we're not going to create the working group to get that sort of feedback. And with the program, it's very important that we do have that line of communication between landlords, whether it's multi-unit, commercial-style landlords that have many, multiple unit dwellings versus one or two properties or just a single rental property.
By requiring the landlords, by requiring the landlords to register the property, that gives us some teeth so that when a tenant does have a problem, we do have a way of contacting the landlord. It also gives us some teeth that we can inspect the property with the landlord's permission so that, or the tenant's permission, either or, so that if the conditions are what's being reported, then we can, you know, bring them to adjudication if necessary to correct the problems. So, I mean.
I agree with the program 100% and so does this individual. I think what her issue was is she's a small property owner. She only has one or two other single-family houses here, not like a multifamily 30-unit building, right? And some of the standards that maybe she was encountering as part of this program were more conducive for a larger-scale landlord than what she was. And I think that's where some of the disconnects were. So if we could explore the program from that side, where maybe what works for one scale isn't necessary or equivocal to another scale. And that's what she was looking for. And I support the program. I think it's very important that we keep track of who's a property owner, who's a tenant, and those sort of metrics.
And if I may, Mayor, that person, because I was in communication with her, I was actually the first one that was in communication with her. And her, the main problem that she had was that because of our scheduling, that we schedule appointments every half hour. And she insisted on having a quarter-hour appointment. And we're looking at that whole scheduling component in, in community development. But that was the main thing. And then proceeded to, you know, because she had multiple units and she had to pay for each unit, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that was the, you know, what got this thing started. And she is actually the one that brought to light that the ordinance had technically expired because of the sunset clause.
Alderman Budmans?
So just to follow up, if there's 1,000 surveys sent out to landlords, that means there's 1,000 units at a minimum. We only sent surveys to 5% of the residents. And we received a 10% return rate on those 5%, which means 1/2, 1% of the people renting in, in Rolling Meadows actually participated in this survey. And I'd really like to have those, all those people are, we represent them. They're residents, they vote, they pay, they pay the tax. I mean, whether they write the check or not, they pay the taxes that cover those units. And so I really would like to have their input, more than five people, to know that this program is working from their perspective too. So whatever we can do, if that means that we send something out with water bills, then we send it out with water bills. But, but to only send it out to, in basically, in effect, to 1,000 to 50 is, you know, 20 to 1. For 20 to 1, that we send it out to the owners rather than the tenants, it, it, it may make them feel like we really don't care what their opinion is.
Well, Alderman Budmans, one of the things with sending it out to the tenants is that we don't know who the tenants are. To us, it's just a resident. They may not be the ones getting the water bill. The owner may be paying for the water bill. So when we send these out, and they were all direct mail because, you know, the, the, the surveys that were sent to the property owners went to the people that are paying for the license and they went out with the renewal notice. But we don't have any idea because there is not a registration process for the tenants. So we would send a direct mail to resident at, say, 3,600 Kirchhoff. And they see resident, City of Rolling Meadows, open it up, you know. And, I mean, they got no skin in the game to respond.
That's what I wanted to ask. When the property owner applies for the license, right? They have to fill out their information, their name and where they live, their home address, their residence? And then they fill out the address for their rental property?
Correct.
But we don't know who the tenant is at that point? And we can't guarantee that we can connect with them? Is that what you're saying?
So some tenants, some property owners make the tenants come to finance and everything's registered to them with their water bill and everything else. So what I'm hearing, I'm not putting words in your mouth. Obviously, starting now, so beginning, but 2019 for the end and 2020, we're going to make every avenue to get to those tenants. We know which ones are rental dwellings. So if that means that we're tagging the house and saying, tenant, please complete, but there are ways of getting a survey out to people. So yes, some of them, the property owners, want to get the water bill and everything else. But majority of them, they don't want anything to do with it, they want it back in there. That's also why when a tenant leaves, you know, and they have skipped on their water bill, it's back to the property owner because that's his property. Or their property, I should say, not being one or another. So in 2020, we would be surveying the tenants, specifically getting that more than 10%. But there are avenues for us to do that. So in our database, between when we send out for the new owners for their items, and we can also tweak potentially, that's my nice way of saying it, the actual permit that they're filling and maybe asking that question. Maybe they don't want to give us that tenant name, but maybe on the overall permit. And we, you know, we've changed permits before and everything else. Maybe we do ask, who is your tenant? And if they say, no one right now, or something. But there are avenues during 2020 that we can get potentially a larger than 10%. And there are ways of doing that at this point in time. And maybe what we also do is, obviously Sergeant Sayes, as he does his training of the new police officer who would be doing the program, when we have the tenants going through their training, we also will tell them, or the owners, I should say, we also will tell them, you need to have your tenant complete the survey too. And then we'll have to figure it out because typically now we might be getting one person sending five in or two in or something. But we would work out those nuances during 2020 to get more information and feedback.
Plus, of course, we're going to want to know who those tenants are when we count them this year.
For the census.
Yeah.
And that's also another reason why tagging a door, we're going to be having different opportunities to do that. And I think also even, just like what we did with complaints, maybe at a few community events, if we have, if you're a renter or something, maybe there's another way of connecting if people feel disconnected because you're a renter compared to an owner. But during 2020, there are other avenues for us to get that feedback that you're looking for. How do people feel on that tenant side?
Thank you. Alderman Beniziano?
Question for Legal. Is this something that we can add to the application? Is that the owner add the tenants' names, be required to add the tenants' names and update the city? Is that something that we can legally require?
I'd have to look into that to confirm that. I don't know that the owner would have to be required to submit that. But I don't know that initially the inquiry is, there's anything wrong with the city's inquiry in that regard. But I will review that and get back to staff with respect to any change in that regard to the survey.
All right. Second question.
Sure.
So not knowing a whole lot of the background, before this survey, had another survey been done ever in the 20 years? Or did this sunset provoke this survey?
In 20 years, there's not been this much discussion on the program. In 20 years, I can tell you that there's not been this. It all started, as the mayor stated, from an email. And again, $75, I think, was the, and, you know, inquiry, do you have Saturday hours? We don't have Saturday hours, but that's something community development. So again, for 20 years, the program has grown, matured, developed. And obviously with some of the other pieces at the police department, specifically Sergeant Sayes, as he was a police officer.
He's moving a little closer.
Oh, yes.
Getting a little closer.
Well, I need the gun soon if this keeps on coming up. It's getting a little more. But again, in 20 years, there's not been that much. And again, it's always been staff-generated about the maturity of the program. And, and again, if it makes people feel comfortable in the room that you still want a sunset, just to make sure that the, obviously, that the survey is out there, I would tell you to make it. When the City of Rolling Meadows had sunsets and when other things, and you go back to some of the readings, they look at it about a five to seven years. So then you could grow, develop, and see if you had other things. So if the council is uncomfortable removing the sunset, and I would tell you, it should feel comfortable removing it. But in 2020, we will do that other survey. We will also, again, with some of the other changes that community development has been working on with Director Horn and obviously Assistant Director Carlton in the back, who did get go through a full vetting process and background, didn't just show up. But the same thing, we can develop some of those other features. But again, up until 20, I think that the email came at the beginning of 2019. There was no discussion about this, only as the, so.
Alderman Bessesi and then Alderman Sanoyka.
Okay, the only thing I was, you actually addressed part of what my question was as far as if we do decide that we would like to keep the sunset, you know, what's our history on sunsets, sunsets as far as how many years? The other thing I'm thinking is that I don't see any reason why, let's say we put a five-year sunset on this. There's no reason it can't come back to a COW meeting prior to that, after we have a survey and ask us, hey, do we want to remove the sunset now? I think the, one of the things I'm hearing is that we're not actually getting everything that was asked the last time the council was, was addressing the sunset. So I think as soon as we get all that, we could address this again. It doesn't have to wait for the sunset to, you know, for us to be on top of it.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka.
I would be in favor of removing the sunset if we could guarantee that this would be revisited. My concern is that it wouldn't be a priority otherwise. So if, to provide some direction for staff on my end to remove this sunset provision, I would want to have some sort of other amendment to the program or the ordinance that incorporates being able to address any changes or be able to provide reports on the status of the program going forward if that means that we've had no complaints and there are no issues. I still think that it's important for the council to know that from the perspectives of owners and from the perspective of tenants.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? So at this point, I think, just to reiterate very what you had mentioned, that you will be working to try and get a more detailed response from tenants?
For 2020.
Yeah, so we can go ahead and build out more of their perspective. In the meantime, we will see this at the council to vote on the sunset clause, whether or not it will continue. Are there any further comments or questions on this?
May I, I would just like to correct something that was stated this evening regarding this is that, so we originally brought this in February and then a committee of the whole meeting was done on March 19th when this was discussed. At that time, Director Vogt in, in the proposal, and again, to the point that, you know, we were supposed to look at creating an ad hoc committee. And what Director Vogt had brought back was, let us do the survey first before we create, or the potential to create the ad hoc committee to look at this. So it was not that we, and city council agreed with that at the committee of the whole meeting on March 19th. So it wasn't that we did not do what city council had asked. We asked to do the survey. The survey, the questions were seen by council prior to the survey going out. And with the, the survey, we had said that we would mail it out when the renewals were mailed in May. So that's why it's been a while since anybody has heard anything.
Sure. Joelyn?
One thing, just to, in preparation of this ordinance for next week, can I get a straw poll on what we would like to see in terms of whether we want or don't want a sunset clause? Or do you want us to keep it drafted as it is and vote to amend it at that time?
I'm not sure that, I don't know what the amendments will change at this time. Alderman O'Brien, you had your hand up.
I was going to say, I'd be in that, I'm with Alderman Sanoyka. Something just in there where it's an annual evaluation. I mean, if it's done through survey on renewal or something like that, I'd be comfortable with removing it, knowing that there'll be, and again, we can't, the 30% response rate's great, we can't make sure it's 60%, but that there is some type of annual evaluation done on the program.
Sure. Where I struggle is that I just, I don't know how many of these landlords represent a single unit as property owner or a multi-unit, multi-story building, right? And so I don't know anything about these responses.
These were not sent to apartment complexes.
So these are just?
These are, these are townhouses and, you know, condo owners and single family.
Okay. So then we don't, also don't know anything about our multi-unit, multi-story tenants that live in the community? That this, that the rental program also impacts them though, correct?
Yes.
And so I would like to have their take on it.
Yes, it does, to a certain degree. And they, you know, they have rights under, you know, their leases and things like that. They're probably more strict than what the leases are as far as for rental housing.
So just for clarification, the ordinance that you're going to see on Tuesday specifically takes the sunset out? But what we can do, obviously, we can type pretty quickly over two days. We could put that, just like other things, that we would have either an annual memo or a staff report and that we would start a process of evaluating. And it might happen that after a year or two, after we're sending out the surveys, we start getting them not returned to us because people said, I already did the survey, I don't care. But at least we could put that wording into the ordinance that staff would be at least a staff memo if you want to continue.
So with a quick show of hands, can I just see from the council who would be in favor of keeping their finger on the pulse of the rental properties? Those in favor? Okay. And then as far as whether it's a sunset clause or just an annual mechanism to keep your finger on that? I think those in favor of some annual mechanism, so that way it's not a sunset clause? Could you show me your hands in favor of an annual mechanism? Okay. Those opposed to having an annual mechanism versus a sunset clause?
I want to know what that mechanism is.
I think it's going to be a staff report. And again, how many surveys went out, how, and also any feedback that we're going to get. So if someone emails again about a concern, that would be put into the discussion. And I think it goes back into, if we do it annually, you'll get comfortable, obviously, the first report in 2020 of how things happen. But at the same point in time, you can get some feedback. As I said, for 20 years, this is the most discussion that we've ever had on this other than when Sergeant Sayes started his crime-free and why we did that.
Alderman Budmans and Alderman Beniziano.
So my gut would be to, to maybe make a amendment to whatever, say that we kick the ball down the field like five years and then everybody would be really great with removing that sunset provision in five years when there's an annual reporting that seems to be working.
provision in five years, when there's an annual reporting that seems to be working, and everybody's comfortable with it. That would make sense, rather than just totally removing it and hoping that it happens.
Right. That's where I was going to go with that. Alderman Beniziano.
So, two parts to this. I, kind of off of what Mr. Wenzel said, is that it was said that, "Let's send the surveys out, and then decide if we need a, you know, a committee formed." We got great responses back from the owners, but not really from the renters. So at this point, I feel like, well, we have our answer on that, let's form the committee, and put the sunset in for a year, reevaluate it with the committee in place, and then decide at that point, okay, it's doing this, we have a committee in place, we have these surveys, and then if it's five years, great. I feel like we don't have enough information right now. That's my opinion.
I feel the same about the information from all parties involved.
Right.
Right? The whole point of the program is to ensure that nobody's being taken advantage of, or nobody's suffering from something, right? And that everybody mutually benefits. I just, what I don't want to do is compound staff's annual workload, if we have to force upon you some mandate where you have to send out this survey, and we have to collect it, and we have to review it, analyze it, and then understand what it means, right? That's a lot of hours to do that, not to mention no guarantee that all the hours you do that, that we'll have enough feedback anyway, to dictate what we should improve, or what we should augment, right? And so I think we should keep the sunset clause in play for a period of time, because it helps us reevaluate it from a certain cadence. But I do think that we need to, in the immediate future, get more feedback, so we recognize everybody involved here, and what their perspective is on it, from tenant to landlord, to multi-unit, multifamily, to onesie-twosie property owners. I don't know if I just spoke in circles on that, but is council in favor of that sort of direction? Continue with the sunset clause. Let staff...
For multiple years, not one year.
Correct, for multiple years. And then let staff get more feedback from those involved in this rental program.
And if I could just add to that one last thing, it would be very helpful, and I don't think we need to do it tonight, but I am very interested in finding out what it is we want to learn, as part of this information gathering process, because I don't want to send out a survey, you know, and not answer the questions that this group is looking to do, and is there a difference between the owners and the tenants? The other thing I want to be aware of is the census. You know, we already are needing the people within these areas that we're going to be targeting these surveys to, to answer the census. I don't want to overwhelm them with questionnaires and surveys in 2020, especially in April of 2020. So I want to be sensitive to that, but I think we can use that time productively to figure out what it is we want to learn, whether we can learn it from survey, whether we need to put a committee together, because I don't...
And I believe we will, we will know what we want to learn from the working group, from the dialogue with those tenants, with those landlords, with the issues they encounter on a day-to-day basis, or on an annual basis, when they're dealing with the program. That's when we, as staff and City Council, will understand the components to the program, because I don't rent any houses, so I don't know any of the intricacies, and I'm not a tenant, so I don't know what hardships they might face. But I think if we put these groups together and have that dialogue, then we'll know exactly what we want to learn, based on the experiences they share.
Right.
Thank you. Any further feedback, comments? Alderman Sanoyka?
I just want to confirm then, after all, that does Assistant Director Public Works have enough direction to move forward for Tuesday?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Then all that's left is a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor?